Good evening. This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Today is January 25th, 2023.
First on the agenda is Robbins, one Ellison Lane. Come and talk to us.
Here's your address. I think the rest of our team is here on Zoom and so Brad Schwartz, who's the author, was helping represent this. He can probably explain the details better, but high level, we were in front of this particular committee recently, you know, in the last few months, and I think broadly speaking, our project has had to incorporate feedback, particularly with respect to wetland buffers. So we have really taken into consideration some ERB feedback, which forced us to go back to the proverbial drawing board. We made some adjustments, and I think we're now at a place where we've really finalized the project. We got conditional approval just Monday night from the ERB, subject to one or two mild things which are easily solved for. And so we're here tonight to show you the final plan. Hopefully get your feedback and move forward with approval from the ZBA. I think with that, just to have any levels set up for everybody, I'll pass it on to Brad, who can walk through some of the stuff, and then Matt Jones, my landscape architect, and Jeff Agarion, our engineer, who could speak to some of the more details in the project.
Hi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I'm just for the record Brad Schwartz. I apologize. I wish I could have been there in person tonight, but there's COVID going through my house. I wasn't feeling great, so I aired on the side of caution and decided to do the meeting from home this evening. Danny just did a nice opening, sort of set the table. As he mentioned, we did receive conditional approval from the ERB just two nights ago. We did not want to come back to your board as we had closed out the ERB process. The couple of design tweaks that Danny mentioned have no bearing on the variances, so the plans that are in front of you are the plans that we're seeking approval for regarding the variances. The project in general involves some backyard patio work that necessitates three variances relating to side yard setback and rear yard setback. And there's a development coverage variance, the fourth variance that relates primarily to walkway improvements in the front yard. I hear a lot of chatter. Can you all hear me okay?
Someone had to mute their box, which has happened.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to repeat that. We have Jeff Agarion with us, who's the engineer, who we lose at 7:30. So I want to make sure we keep a minute or two for Jeff to briefly walk the board through the storeboard and design plan. But first I'll turn it over to Matt to walk the board through the overview of the project.
Hello, everyone. The fine intent behind these improvements was to bring better functionality to the driveway, update the rear yard spaces, and add a walkway connected in front of the house to the pool area, and also provide some pool lawn areas in the backyard in proximity to the house and other proposed improvements. The lot has a very awkward shape. There's a brook that meanders along the road, and the house is set back off the road approximately 200 feet. The driveway in the area of the garage doors is undersized. The distance to back out varies from 26 feet at the shortest spot by the existing retaining wall. It's a normal distance for... There's also two... It's off to the side, but the reason that we want to encourage this driveway and reroute it towards the front is because the current situation isn't allowing for guests and delivery vehicles maneuver now with ease. So we'd like to do a break line, bend the drive... We proposed a circle turnaround through the break turnaround. And that, but it'll be much more effective for vehicles.
Matt, Matt, it's Danny speaking. I just, just so you know, you're cutting out quite a bit, and I'm not sure if it's a Wi-Fi issue, but considering Brad is sharing the screen, it may be technologically more efficient to just dial in, and perhaps you can just use, you know, calliphonically to speak and cut out the gaps in communication.
All right, so I'm moving in the house.
For that.
While you're getting set up again, I just want to share just a photo of the existing condition, so you can all appreciate just how narrow the existing driveway is and why the Robbins seek to create that circular turnaround leading to their front door. I don't know if any of you had a chance to actually go and visit the site, so we took some photos that we could share this evening. So this is the, this is the narrowed driveway leading into the office street. So I'll go back to the plan now. Matt, let's see if that's better.
All right, so Danny, tell me if it's still cut now with, once I start going again. So also as part of this project, we want to add a pathway along the right side of the house. There's currently no access on the left side due to the tall existing retaining wall. So this new pathway would bring you through a small garden, which you can see in the first 3D graphic in the top left corner. You see the motor court and how a pathway brings you into this entry garden. This side of the house is currently a gentle lawn slope down to the woods. It's a pretty consistent slope, so there would be some regrading to occur in order to create a lawn plateau up by the pool, so that we could have a little more lawn area in the backyard. There'd be a set of stairs set into the slope that'll connect this new pathway down to the lower lawn woodland area. And there will be no grading occurring in the woodland, and all areas that are being disturbed as part of this project are currently lawn, and they would be returned to lawn and landscaping. We also want to add patio in the sunny, in the sunnier portion of the yard by the pool. So that's in the south and west corner. So we've added a small patio in that corner and another small overflow lawn behind it, and that would all be supported by a boulder retaining wall. That patio does require a setback variance for side yard, I believe. Then we have the hatch pattern. That's a very minimal, it's like a two-foot variance we're asking. It's a, the existing patio is slightly over the setback line currently, and we're just trying to center that patio on the interior living room of the house, because it, there's currently no real design to the patio they have in the backyard. And then there's a wall and some steps, and we want to go up to that, create a small lawn sitting area that overlooks the rest of the yard. That would also have another small set of stairs that would access a children's play area that's to the left side of the house. Surrounding all of these patios and walkways is a lot of landscaping. There's no need for privacy, because there's a lot of existing large mature vegetation surrounding the yard, and the neighbors are all uphill. And as part of the environmental review board meeting on Monday night, we showed the ERB that we will be doing a one-to-one ratio of landscape mitigation that's all along the woodland. And we're also going to be using pervious asphalt for the new asphalt areas in the driveway, because that was another one of their concerns.
Hey, Matt, before you go on, I'm going to interrupt you only because we lose Jeff, the engineer, just a minute or two. So I want to stop this plan and ask Jeff to speak for a moment on his storeboard design.
Good evening, everybody. So yes, quickly, I'll touch on the storeboard design. Due to the increase in impervious area in the driveway and in the rear yard, we're proposing to install two 1,290 gallon seepage tanks, one in the front yard and one in the rear yard, as depicted on the, on the plan. The rear yard storeboard will be routed via a series of lawn drains through PVC piping into the area as depicted right there. And the driveway area in the front, all the water is going to be routed to a trench drain running across the new driveway area. The new driveway is going to be curved, so all the water will be contained within driveway area, and then be routed to the seepage tank in the front of the property. The tanks will be designed according to township standards. We got a letter from Terry Rowe. The pre and post hundred-year hydrographs have been performed, so these tanks have the adequate volume to store that increase in impervious area and the increase in flow from the hundred-year storm.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before Jeff jumps in, are there any storeboard questions? Now's, now's your chance. I guess, hearing none. Jeff, thank you for joining.
Will do. Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
It has not been evaluated by the county engineer as of yet. The application for the storeboard has been...
Brad, that was really all I had as far as a walkthrough. So I'm ready. I'll take questions too.
That's right. And just to show the board, so here's a pool patio area that requires the 14-foot side yard variance. It's a 45-foot requirement, and so it's a 14-foot variance right here. This right here is the setback line, and you see the patio intruding a little bit over that line. Here's the hatched patio that requires a 13-foot rear yard variance. And up here is that lawn patio that requires a 42-foot rear yard. And this got some attention back in November, you recall. And that's what I just really highlight. This really isn't a patio in the traditional sense. It is a lawn seating area with some decorative bluestone trim. It's that bluestone trim that triggers the need for variance. This is essentially lawn area with some seating. And I have a photo also to show you what that looks like in the existing condition. Hang on. Why? One moment. Try to pull it up. So here are the steps leading up right from this, the hatched pool patio. So these are the stairs that lead up to this seating area. So this is where there would be that bluestone trim with the retaining wall and just some seats. And so that again, that's this area here. So those are the three setback variances associated with the three patios, but you get it all triggered, especially by the irregular shape of the site and the fact that so much of the property is within wetland buffer. There really is just a very small area where the Robbins can make these type of backyard improvements. And then the fourth variance again is the coverage, and that is necessitated largely by the driveway improvement. I showed you the picture earlier of the narrow driveway and hence the need for the large circular turnaround for particular delivery and safety. So we walk the board through the five factor test in our submission letter. I'm happy to go through the five factors if you like, or we could just pause in our presentation and take any questions.
Could I just ask, on the development coverage, back in October, at the time that the building department looked at the applications, I think that the proposed development coverage was 14, 6, 27. Is it now 15, 52?
15, 121.
15, 121. So it went up from an 8% variance to an 11% variance as a result of the driveway change.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. What changed?
It, so the total development coverage is now 15, 121. And that's a jump from an 8% variance to an 11% variance. That again was a result largely of the change by removing the pavilion as the ERB requested and providing the circular driveway in the front of the house. So it's a small increase in development coverage as compared to what we presented back in November.
I don't want to contradict you, but in your favor. My spreadsheet came last, last time you were here, it was a 10% variance, not an 8%, and you went up to 11. So I think it'd be better if you accepted only 1% change rather than a 2% change.
So noted.
I think also just to contextualize what happened, and I can't speak about it with certainly the expertise that they can, but it's just the homeowner and full, you know, transparency. We had a draft...
English would be preferred.
Yes, exactly. Thank you. We had a draft that included a pavilion. They were calling it a pavilion. We thought about it as a pool house. That was taking up a big part of the budget. It couldn't work on the property according to the ERB. We had to capitulate on that point and to be flexible.
Tried to move it to like...
Yeah, we tried to move. It didn't work. We got rid of it. The circle drive was always our goal. We have a enormous problem with deliveries. They do an eight-point turn. It's so clunky. It's very awkward, and even when we have company over, when you have more than two or three cars in driveway, it's really like bumper cars. We had always wanted to do it. We just frankly didn't have the budget to do everything. And so when the pavilion got removed, I asked the landscape architect, can we please put this in? This is really would be like a goal of ours to have it, and now we might be able to afford it. And so it effectively changed our rendering, which is what modified the percentage terms.
Okay. So what is the right development coverage number? Is it 15, 121?
15, 121.
Okay.
Right. It's the right number. 11%.
And the pavilion, the pavilion was on the original plan?
Correct. That was, that was always on the plan. I don't remember the exact timeline and when it went off, but I believe it was basically right before we presented you guys last time, the ERB had given us the feedback that it had to get moved. We tried to move it. I mean, I have renderings. I worked with the architect to move it across three different locations that technically weren't wetland buffer, but it was so awkward and it was so forced that aesthetically it was ruining it. And so we removed it sometime around October.
I see. That's something that's been taken out.
It's been, yeah, like definitively and categorically removed from the project.
And that's frankly what caused some confusion back in November, because it was removed shortly before that meeting. So it was shown on plans that were originally submitted to your board in a position outside the buffer as the ERB had requested, but then upon further reflection, it was removed from the drawing and hence the driveway. So the plan before you tonight obviously does not show the pavilion anywhere to remove from the application.
Thank you.
And the ERB was quite pleased by that Monday night. And again, their only comments were to convert some of the driveway to a pervious paver and also just to show the stuff that we're pitching on the plan, which obviously we would do.
Any other questions by the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this? Is there, are there any digital hands up? Thank you. I make a motion when we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Favor.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Moes.
Hi.
Let them make a motion.
This is a difficult one, but I'll try it. All right. I'm going to make a motion of the application, Robbins' application for four variances. A 14-foot side yard variance for the pool patio. 42-foot rear yard variance for the lawn patio structure. 13-foot rear yard variance for the bluestone patio, hatch patio, and development coverage variance. 15, they proposed a development coverage of 15, 121, which is 11, 11% variance. I'm going to approve that, this application for the following reasons. This is a difficult property to work on. There's a lot of wetlands. It's hilly. It's, the house is way back off the road, requiring a very long driveway, and the applicant has done the best possible that they could to alleviate some of their problems and come up with a reasonable plan. They've been before as before and come back with improvements to it. They've been in front of the ERB, and who else were you in front of? The architectural board as well?
Architectal board. How useless, as is the architect.
And have done all possible to make this a good project for all concerned. Granted, the various will not create undesirable changes to the character of the neighborhood. There are no other means available to achieve the desired end. The entire variance will not create an adverse effect on the physical environment of the property or the neighborhood. While some of this may be considered a self-created hardship, the benefit to the applicant will far outweigh any perceived detriment to the neighborhood or the town. And if you can start within six months and finish within a year and give us... Do we need any foundation surveys or just final stuff?
Finals would be fine, sir.
Final surveys upon completion, spoiling grant.
And for the record, Mr. Jardina mentioned an 11% development coverage. Just the exact number is a variance of 1,552 feet of development coverage and of course ERB approval. I know it's a conditional approval, so just kind of make sure that the ERB is a...
Let's get that in there as well.
Yeah.
And I should have said 50, 52, but I skipped right to my 11%.
Sorry. Yeah. Just wanted to get the numbers out there. I second. Hi.
Anthony Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Moes.
Hi. Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you.
Variances.
Grateful. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next is Brewer, 3306 Road. Can I skip one? Oh, Martin, I'm sorry. Martin, 18 Paulding Drive.
Hey, how are you? We're good. Good. Should I kick it off?
Yes, please do.
All right. So we met last month. We had installed a four-foot fence in our backyard. Our backyard unfortunately is Paulding Drive, you know, which we, which we view as a hardship. So we put up a four-foot fence to provide some privacy for our four children, ages four, six, eight, and 10. You know, previously they were playing right on Paulding Drive with cars driving by there. That's where their swing set is, their sandbox, their soccer goal, trampoline. So we installed the fence there on top of our stone wall, which is either level two or subterranean of our, of our yard. We spoke about this, I think, yeah, most of this last meeting, we were, you know, very mindful of the style of fence. When you make a left out of our driveway, three of the six houses that you see first all have the same style fence, same exact color. So I think we were well thought out in that approach. I think we left it with you guys last time. Half of you were okay with the variance. And then I think there was, you know, one or two folks that wanted to come out and do a site visit. Then that's where, you know, that's sort of where we left it.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak for myself as it relates to the site visit that I did. So I did note that in 236 Benford, there is a similar style fence, a six-foot fence on top of a two-foot wall. I note that in the general area, including Kitchwan, I did not see other walls and fences of the same construction. The wall seemed to vary in height, partly or entirely because of the topography, I think.
Yeah.
Closest to the driveway, I think it ranged from 47 inches to 49 inches. There was a four-foot fence, and there was a three and a half to four-inch gap between the wall and the start of the fence. That does include, of course, the columns in between. So I, you know, my own observation is that that this structure is significant, and I think that if you had come to us before doing the installation, I think the board would have directed you to look at regrading the area where there's drop-off, because there obviously is a severe drop-off. If the yard itself is at zero, I think where the wall is, is minus two or greater. And I think then you could have been in, you could have been consistent with the town code. So those are, those are my observations. Did anyone else make a visit and have anything different or additional to add?
Well, I visited the property as well, and quite frankly, the design of that fence is not what I was chosen. I was chosen to do something different. We're not the design police. We're the zoning board. And there have been instances in the past where we had fences on top of walls, and some we approved and some we didn't, depending on the circumstances. It's my feeling, this particular fence. While I'm not happy with it, I don't, I don't think it's egregious enough to have the applicant rip it down or change it or any way like that. I would grudgingly agree to approve this unless somebody can tell me some really particular reason why we shouldn't. But for the record, I'm not quite happy with the, with the design choice.
So Martin, can I just ask, so the, as you travel down Paulding, the wall obviously stops and the fence on top of it also stops.
Yeah.
And then that part of your property is sort of open to the, to the street.
Yeah, so that the wall takes up, the wall takes up about half of our property, right? It's almost probably half of our backyard, the stone wall, and that's where our, right, that's where all of the children's functional, you know, all of their play structures are. So that's the part that, you know, we chose to give them some privacy. You know, I didn't, as you guys know, I didn't build that wall that Paul's very old. We, we've restored it, right? We've put in, you know, time and money to, you know, get it structurally sound, you know, and hopefully, you know, positive look for, for the neighborhood. But, you know, that's, you're correct. It's about half of our property.
Can you tell us, in your own words, why, if the wall is existing, why you couldn't put a shorter fence and met the code and still had a fence along your backyard? What was the reason for that?
Yeah, because I like, I, I, I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name, who spoke before, but you sort of gave the example of the wall, the yard being zero in the wall. You know, the wall is, in most cases, in the backyard, lower than our backyard. It's just, just happens to be the grade, you know. So if I'm six foot two, if I'm standing in the backyard and you're standing on the road, you're going to see me, right? It's not privacy for me. It's privacy for my, you know, four, six, eight, and 10-year-old. That was the height that gave them some privacy, you know, from the road while they're, you know, playing. You know, if some, someone drives by and my kids are basically were, you know, on a stage eye level with, you know, cars and trucks. You know, it's just an unfortunate circumstance. You know, it's just an unfortunate circumstance of, of the grade of the yard and how it was designed.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any digital hands up? Any other comments by the board? Did, did we discuss if they were to lower the fence on top of the wall so there isn't that?
He just said it would be too low for guys.
You can't do it.
Well, you can't do it, but it doesn't, I want to speak for him.
The, the stone wall isn't level.
No.
And I think the...
Are you guys referring to the gap?
Yeah.
Yeah, that the gap unfortunately is because the stone wall isn't, isn't level. I, you know, obviously for, like, that, that project took two weeks, right? It was very methodical. Stone wall work, two panels up at a time. It took, it took over two weeks. To do all of that and make a straight line, unfortunately, again, a very old wall, you know, lots of water in this area, you know, I'm guessing things set over time. And so, you know, what I wanted to do obviously was make it as flush as possible with the engineering. It just wasn't possible because there are some parts that are, you know, a few inches higher than the other. So four inches was the lowest we could possibly go with, you know, having sort of a, a straight line. Otherwise, you wouldn't have been able to put it in. So believe me, guys, I thought of, I thought of all of this as well. We really did try to, you know, I, I think do everything, you know, in, in spirit of the neighborhood and, you know, try to be good neighbors. So, you know, we really appreciate you hearing us out.
I move with close public hearing.
One second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Hi.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Nolan.
Hi.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a reluctant motion to approve.
All right, thank you guys very much. Have a great night.
At least yet, no.
Oh, we're not, okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that the, the Martin application on eighteen Pauling Drive for a two-foot wall variance, where, fence variance, where six foot is allowed and eight foot is existing, be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has tried his best to keep the fence as low as possible and still afford protection for his backyard where his children play and for their privacy and their safety. Determine that the height of this fence is as low as it can go and still afford the desired effect, the end. While the design is not the best design in the world, we, at least I feel that, well, I'm not the design police. I wasn't consulted before it was built, but I will reluctantly say that it's acceptable. The granting of the variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There are other white final fences in the neighborhood. There is no other, no other method sought that can achieve the desired end. It's, the two-foot variance, in my opinion, is not substantial. In this, this particular event, it's not a substantial variance. There will be no adverse environmental effects in the neighborhood with the approval of this wall. This is definitely a self-created hardship, but self-created hardships are not necessarily cause for denial. If you can give us a finished survey of the wall dimensions and the fence dimensions, we should approve.
So I'd like a second. Second motion.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
I'm going to decline. I think that this isn't in keeping with what the town would like to see. I think if, if entire sites were enclosed in eight-foot fences, it would detract from what the town is trying to achieve. I think the variance is substantial. I think there are other means that the applicant could have used in achieving the same thing. And I do think there would be an adverse impact on the environment of the, of the town. For these reasons, I cannot endorse the application.
Anthony Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Grudgingly, aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. You have your variance, Mr. Martin.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Now we're gonna do Brewer.
Okay, hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I'm Frank Tancredi, the Brewer's architect. I'm here tonight with Laura Brewer.
I'm sorry, if you could speak up a bit now, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, it's Frank Tancredi, architect. And I'm here tonight with Laura Brewer of two eighty-three Millwood Road. And we're here to ask for a ten-foot variance on an existing structure, legal non-conforming structure. Can I share my screen now?
Sir, could you move closer to the microphone or do something to increase the volume?
Can you hear me now better?
Seems better, yes.
Okay. So I'm gonna share my screen. I'll try to talk a little louder. You can see it okay?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, so this is a plot plan of the existing house, which was built in nineteen fifty-three. And where we're proposing to do some work is on the back of the house. There's an existing stone terrace here, right off the, you know, the kitchen area. And this area here is a one-story family room with a cathedral ceiling. And this is an open porch, you know, with a little shed roof. I'll share some photos in a moment. It's unfortunate that this, you know, when they built the house, they, they pushed it over, you know, to the side yard.
Sir, could you speak up again? I'm, I'm sorry, we're, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, I don't know why.
Maybe, could we start with perhaps the applicant just describing in a non-technical sense what it is she's looking to accomplish?
Okay. Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Laura Brewer. Thank you so much for having me and taking the time. I love living in my house and I recently gave birth to a second child. And
Sure.
You can't hear me?
No, we can hear you. It would help if you could speak a little louder, but we can't hear you better than your architect.
Okay, I'm gonna just shout. So thank you so much for having me. I'm the homeowner. I love living here. I recently gave birth to a second child and my family has expanded. And I'm looking to just get some additional square footage of living space that I can use year-round versus just in the summer. So currently, I have a porch that extends across on the other side of my family room, and there's a stone patio. So I'm looking to, yes, Frank is showing it there. I'm looking to enclose that space and just make it indoor living space and one larger family room.
Also, we're gonna be bumping out the kitchen, but that doesn't require a variance.
Correct.
Is the room that's being expanded a family room and this, this will, the net result will be this will be a larger family room?
Correct, yes.
The room currently is, you know, the family room with the cathedral ceiling. It's really the playroom right now, but this open porch would be enclosed and that would be, you know, serve as like the TV room with access to the terrace. This kitchen bump out would also give them a little more room in the kitchen so they're not crowded around the table, you know, where this bay window here with the window seat gets a little tight. So we're gonna, you know, bump out the kitchen. Everything is on existing foundation and, you know, you know, stonework. I mean, we'll put fittings and whatnot, but we're not disturbing, you know, grade outside of what's already been, you know, developed. So there's zero impact on that. It's just unfortunate, if you look at our site plan, that the, you know, the current setback of thirty-five feet goes about halfway through the, you know, this room in this porch. So currently it's about twenty-five feet and that's where we're getting, we're asking for a ten-foot variance because we are, you know, going from changing use from, you know, outside space to interior habitable space.
Okay, thank you. I think we understand.
Yeah, very simple.
No problem.
Are there any questions from the audience? No, okay, thank you.
Please. Please.
I make a motion with close public hearing.
Second.
Please. I'm gonna have to go on. I have to go on, I'm next. I don't see it. I don't see my, oh, maybe they have to, when he gets off, I feel, oh, here it is.
Could someone mute themselves? We can hear you speaking in the background.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs. Michael Nolan.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move that the Brewer application for a side yard variance of ten feet to expand a family room in a pre-existing non-conforming home built in nineteen sixty-three, be approved for the following reasons. This will certainly allow the family to make better use of the home, given their expanding family. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefits cannot be sought through other means. This is the logical location for this expansion to take place. The requisite variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And due to the pre-existing non-conforming site, this is not a self-created difficulty. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete. We'll need a foundation survey prior to framing.
I'll second that.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
And I'm sorry, just there were no neighbors who spoke out opposition. Aye.
Anthony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. Thank you. You have your variance.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You're welcome.
Robertson is next. Where is he?
Mr. Robertson?
Hello. I think David Graham is joining us as well.
Yeah, hi, how are you?
We're good. We can hear you, David.
Yeah. On my own, at least. Is it muted?
We never, we never have trouble hearing David Graham.
Okay, we can hear you. You're all set.
Okay, I'm David Graham. I'm here representing Craig's, they're at thirty-four Bittersweet Lane. And the reason why we're here is there is a ten, a one-story, ten-by-sixteen storage shed that's to the right side of the property that was built a couple of years ago without, and it wasn't permitted. And we are trying to legalize it and it requires a front and a side yard variance. The existing front yard is thirty-eight point three-four feet, where sixty feet is required. So that would require a twenty-one point six-six front yard variance. And on the right side to the property, side property line, we are eight point twelve feet, where thirty-five is required, requiring a twenty-six point eight-eight side yard variance. So that, that's why we're here tonight, hoping to obtain those variances so that we can, you know, get a build, you know, get a building permit and a C of O for the structure.
So I understand that the shed is there in place now, but given your vivid imagination, there's no other location on this property that you could relocate the shed to that would not require?
Well, the issue is there's a, there's a, a stream at the back of the property that runs, you know, one-third from the rear. And the hundred-foot setback line, you know, comes to in front of the house. So we, the shed where it's located is just shy of a hundred feet from the stream. It's ninety-two point three. So would, you know, those, those other locations, you know, encroach, you know, onto the wetlands and, and, you know, and also the septic area. We're trying to avoid that.
So Mr. Robertson, maybe you could explain to us the, the location of the shed and proximity to your closest neighbor? Could you help us understand that?
Yeah, happy to. So we have a relatively short driveway. The shed is just on the right-hand side of the driveway. As, as you come down the driveway, that, that is separated between us and our nearest neighbor by a series of vegetation, pine trees and other longstanding vegetation that has been there. And the shed was, was not put on a foundation. It actually, sitting on top of a gravel bed, and the intention there was, you know, I, I didn't necessarily understand that we, we needed a permit to put a shed without a foundation in, in that location. So obviously, an oversight on, on my part. But, but the intention was to create additional kind of storage space for us close to the area of utility. The house was built nineteen sixty-five, I believe. The, one of the garage bays is less than a hundred and eighty-three inches. So I'm not sure if you've measured any recent automobiles, but most automobiles are larger than that. And so it creates virtually no storage space in the garage bay, which requires, you know, bikes and, and other things to find other homes. So as a result, I made the decision to put a, a, a non-sort of foundation-based shed right next to the driveway for easy access.
So even though there isn't a foundation, you did have to create a retaining wall and raise the level of the placement location for the shed, right?
That's correct.
And your, your closest neighbor, have they ever had any comment about the shed being as close to their property as it is?
They have not, to my knowledge.
Okay. Is, is anything being done with the shed or is it, you're not putting foundation in with the shed now? It's just gonna remain on the gravel?
Correct.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? No. I move with close public hearing.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Aye.
Anthony Giardina.
Aye.
Howard Dubs.
Aye.
Michael Nolan.
Aye. I'll make a motion. I move that the Robertson application to legalize a shed requiring front yard variance of twenty-two feet, side yard variance of twenty-seven feet, be approved for the following reasons. I'm sorry, how long has the shed been in place?
It's been in place less than four years.
I'm sorry, how many years?
Supposed to be four.
Four, okay. The shed has been in place for four years. There have been no neighbors to speak in opposition of it. It does appear to be well screened. The, the site is challenged... the site is challenged by a brook that travels through it. Therefore, there not being alternative logical locations for the shed. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefits cannot be sought through other means or methods. The variance is, could be termed substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the difficulty is not self-created, given the water that travels through the property. Do you have the, the survey sufficient for what we have? Yes. For these reasons, I think we should approve.
I'll second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Nolan?
Aye.
And for the record, ERB approval, because there is the brook running through the backyard. So condition on ERB approval.
Okay. So noted. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. You have your variance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you, David.
Rosenfeld, eighty-nine Hilltop Drive?
Is there someone representing Rosenfeld here?
No? Chabra? fourteen Chabra Mountain Road?
Yes, hi, this is Abdul Chabra.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I start now?
Yes, please do.
Great, thank you. So first of all, thanks everyone for giving me the opportunity and the time to review this application. I've lived in Chappaqua since two thousand and seven. Really enjoyed the neighborhood, done many modifications to my house. Because my house sits right next to a wetland, right next to a stream. Every little update I do has to go through wetlands permit approval. So I'm no stranger to the environmental coordinator and the building inspector. This particular project is a fairly small one. It's a modest-sized house, but nevertheless, the house structure has no bearing on this request. Let me, let me share my screen. I'll bring up the... Give me one sec. Okay, this is an aerial view of the house. Right.
I'm sorry, sir, we're not seeing it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sharing it, right?
Why don't you go out and come back in? Stop sharing and then try to share it again.
All right. Okay, I tried again.
We can see it, yes.
All right, great. So this is an aerial view of the property. Right? Close to the bottom edge of the picture is a stream. And from the house towards the stream is a steep slope, as I've indicated here. I'm hoping you can see my cursor, right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. There's also a steep slope over here. So the, the request is to install a generator and seek a couple of feet of variance from the side yard setback. The reason that I need that variance is the only good place to install a generator is around this area. Where there's a somewhat of a flat area here where we can install a little, little pad and put a generator on it. Over here is all very steep slope. In the front is a big rock and steep slope. The electrical main panel is right here in the garage. So ideally, the generator should be somewhere up close to the garage. And I find this to be the best place. I can't figure out any other place to install this. And you could easily move this a few feet to the right and not ask for a variance, but the problem is there's a fence installed over here. There's a gate over here. I need access to that gate to carry, or rather for my lawn mowing contractor to carry their mowers and other tools and so on. So I'm really pushed into having this close to the corner of this stone wall, which would require about three feet of variance in terms of side yard setback. I have spoken to the neighbor, shown him these pictures, and discussed the project with him. The neighbor that is impacted at ten Chappaqua Mountain Road. They have given me a no objection letter, which is enclosed along with my application.
Mr. Chabra?
Yes.
Could I ask, looking at your survey, the generator appears to be some distance off of the house. How many feet is it actually off of the house? It doesn't, doesn't appear that way on the, the drawing that you have up now, but on the survey, it looks like it's...
On the survey, because this, you're seeing the survey on the screen right now, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so there is no stone wall shown on the survey. And that's why the, the orientation and the, and the location of the generator is sort of approximate there. I would request you to look at the aerial picture that gives you a precise location.
So are you saying that the stone wall would impede placing the generator closer to the home?
Yes. So out here is a septic area. And this is a fenced yard where my dogs play. I would prefer not to have the generator on the other side of the wall. It would be much nicer to have it this side of the wall.
Okay, so just our concern is to grant the, where we do grant, a variance for the the least amount of
Yeah, yeah. Understood.
Space. And so I, I just want to be clear, and I, I guess I, not, I don't want to repeat myself, but so you have placed the generators close to the house as you can because of these other physical impediments that exist.
Yes, okay, okay. And by the way, the stone wall already extends beyond that. I don't know what the zoning requirements are for the stone wall, but this was done with a building permit as well many years ago.
Yeah, you shouldn't be concerned about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience to be heard on this matter? No? Any other questions? I move with close public hearing. Second?
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Nolan?
Aye. I'll make a motion. I move that the Chabra application for a three-foot variance for the installation of a generator be approved for the following reasons. The applicant has been thoughtful about the placement of the generator. There are instructions that make the the amount of the variance what it is. It's not possible for it to be lessened. There will be no undesirable change produced in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created. You will have six months to start and one year to complete. And do you want it as-built?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we'll need it as-built. Survey, go ahead, George.
And ERB approval, a condition on ERB approval?
Yes, yes. I've already submitted a wetland application, wetlands application, so that's in process. That, that's required before proceeding. I understand that, yeah.
Okay.
And also, just for the record, there was a letter sent in by a neighbor who just wants to say that they have no issue with it. But I want to, for the record, a neighbor at fourteen Chappaqua Mountain Road, Robert Bloom.
Yes. There at ten Chappaqua Mountain Road, there's the next house.
Sorry.
He's in.
I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Okay. For these reasons, we should approve.
I'll second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Nolan?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chabra. You have your variance.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Sorry, just before you continue, the architect for eighty-nine Hilltop, he's in attendees. So maybe he's not able to get in, but I do see him. His name is Philip.
Do we have Mr. Rosenthal's architect? Present?
He needs to move him from attendee into
Oh.
An participant.
Hold on for one second, please.
They can do that, Jacky?
Yep.
Rosenfeld.
Oh.
Okay, come on up.
I was a participant and not a...
Don't take your jacket off. Come on up.
I had a dream last night that this happened and it's like insane.
No, no, you're up. So tell us about your application.
I'm Philip Pollard. Um, so what, what started this whole process is that my client, Jenny David Rosenthal, are looking at putting a geothermal system into, onto their property. They've installed solid panels. They want to get as much off the grid as possible, increase efficiency of their house. So they need to basically demo out their existing deck to put the wells in where it is now. So they'll have to demo out that. The deck is about twenty years old. It's pretty worn out. It's fairly illogical as these, well, it seems to meet the architecture of the rounded edges. It's really well thought out from a sort of use perspective. So we would square off that existing deck after, after it gets demoed, after the wells are put in, would rebuild. Would putting, put in an existing orthogonal deck. And then we'd like, offset from the edges, to put in a pergola, prefabricated pergola roof structure that has automated movers that can be closed up and, and opened up. And that would serve as a dining lounge area. And so we, so the current deck does have a variance. It was granted way back when in the files. So we're rebuilding largely in the same position, bumping out a couple of but inset from that edge, from the deck edge onto the area, we'd like to create a sheltered space. It's, it's a little, it's quite high up in the air. So I think the deck makes the pergola sort of encloses you a little bit, gives you a bit experience of the landscape rather than this sort of perch. We did receive ARB approval. I had photos and to help you understand the, the site a little bit. It's unfortunate that the house is where it is. Most likely because of
You want to be in a different town? Is that what you mean?
No, it's, it's a topography. The topography means that it has to be, well, I, I guess it was sited within the setback. And therefore, anything that we do on that side requires a variance. So...
And so it's a little hot, so the shaded area on your key player, that's, that's the deck.
That's the new deck that we're from.
New deck, right, okay.
I can, I can hold the plans and talk to them. I actually
No, no, we
But I don't know if you had a chance to visit.
No, no, we, we, we understand the application, I think. Any questions, board? Anyone in the audience to be, to be heard on this matter? No? I make a motion. We close public hearing. Second?
Chairman Kenneth Cooper?
Aye.
Anthony Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Nolan?
Aye. I'll make a motion. I move that the Rosenthal application to reconstruct a deck and pergola requiring a variance of twelve feet for the deck and ten feet for the pergola be approved for the following reasons. The applicant is making energy improvements to their home. As a result, they are demolishing the current deck, which has received a variance previously. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The benefit cannot be sought through other means. The requested variance is not substantial. There'll be, no, there'll be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the alleged difficulty is not self-created. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete. We'll need a as-built survey upon completion. There were no neighbors that spoke in opposition also.
I'll second.
Aye.
Anthony Giordina?
Aye.
Howard Dubs?
Aye.
Michael Nolan?
Aye. Thank you. You have your variance.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you for bearing with me to that slide tech.
We were literally just switching you over when you walked.
Oh, it's, um...
I noticed you were in attendance when we were switching you over.
Oh, I just jumped out.
Salazar is next. And before we start in the interest of the cold disclosure, the Salazar property is a corner lot on corner Bedford Road and Kathleen Lane. The Salazar rear yard abuts the side yard of my son who lives on Bedford Road. Unless there are objections from our legal counsel or from any neighbors, I do not intend to recuse myself from this application. I do think I could be fair and objective. But as I said, if there are any objections to that, I will recuse myself.
As long as you can be, as long as you have determined you can be objective, then there's no problem if you continue in having disclosed the potential interest.
I feel I can. It has no effect on my son's property. It's just that he's there.
Okay, Mrs. Salazar?
Good evening. I'm here, Alan Pilch, from LP Engineering. I'm with me also, as you see, is Evers Salazar. And thank you for...
Could I ask if you could speak up, get closer to the microphone? We're having difficulty hearing you.
Does this help? Can you hear me now?
It might be something that they could do inside, because they changed it before and it sounded better.
Hey, guys, is there anything you can do to enhance? Thank you. Just give us a second.
Sure.
Let's, let's hear Mr. Pitch.
Okay, again, Alan Pilch, LP Engineering. Is that better?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. If I might, might I share my screen on this?
Sure.
Okay. Can you see the screen?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
So Mr. Salazar's property is located at the intersection of Bedford Road and Kathleen Lane. It's number one. It is the first house on the left-hand side when you're driving in from Bedford Road. And what this application involves is the reconstruction of this driveway or parking area in the front yard for Mr. Salazar. The original driveway or the, the parking area for off the driveway was approximately fifteen feet from the front lot line. And there was a plan that was put forward by myself as engineer and Jerry Barrett, who was the landscape architect on it, to relocate, to actually shrink this parking area so that it would be twenty-five feet from the front lot line. Unfortunately, so this is the, the former parking area. And on the current survey, as you can see, that parking area is twenty-two point nine feet from the front lot line. So unfortunately, that you know, the, the, the town code requires that the parking be set back from the front lot line so that it's greater than one-half requires that the parking be set back from the front lot line so that it's greater than one-half of the district front yard setback. Given that the front yard setback is 50 feet, the parking area had to be 25 feet from the front lot line. And so we're actually requesting, now that it's 22.9 feet away and this parking area is paved with asphalt. It is edged with Belgium block curbing or stone. So we're requesting that the board kindly grant a variance of 2.1 feet for this parking area. I would like to also note that the prior activity within this property, and it's only 0.6 acres. It's a very small property, was really done. It was very, I used the term very minor grade, really no grading was performed. Only smoothing of areas to establish a new lawn, and that is what Mr. Salazar has done. I can. I'll also just point out that from my perspective as engineer on the property, what I had done as well was for this new parking area that was here in the front yard, front line. There's a break in the curbing and a rain garden or a bi-retention area, which was designed in the front yard. I did perform deep hole imperforation tests and both were reviewed by Terry Rowe at the town. And so he was cognizant of the drainage conditions, which are actually very good in the front yard. And that's the the work that was done on the property. So again, the request is, as I say, unfortunately, the redesign, the shrunken, if you will, parking area in the front yard, which is supposed to be 25 feet away from the front lot line, ended up being 22.9 feet from the front lot line. So we are requesting a 2.1-foot variance to legalize this revised parking area.
I have to apologize. I'm not sure that I followed. Why is it that that you can't get further away from the lot line to to not require variance? I understand you're shrinking the parking area, but why can't you go further?
Oh, it already, the the work is already completed. What what you're looking at here on the, and I'll share the screen again. This work is already completed. So this is a Belgium block curve around the perimeter of the of the parking area. This is a paved area. There's a drop curb here, conveys runoff into a bi-retention area. And this curbing is already here. So what we're requesting is the board kindly permit Mr. Salazar to retain this parking area, although it is, I know it's 22.9 feet away from the front lot line, but since it's already constructed and there is actually a fairly substantial, maybe I could show some pictures of it, there's some, there's a lot of vegetation, which has already been constructed along the the front of the property. And so it's really is well-hidden. The parking area is well-screened from the front lot line. So, you know, that really has, you know, I'll say minimal impact onto the street or onto the neighborhood because it is well-screened.
Why did the parking area require reconstruction?
Originally, originally, if I, I guess this was the original paved area from the parking area, and Mr. Salazar had constructed a new parking area in the front, which unfortunately was as little as 15 feet away from the the front lot line. And so I guess the town was made aware of it and he was requested to to fix this situation. And what he ended up doing was, you know, improve the situation. It reduced the amount of parking area and impervious surface, but it did not accomplish what the town had requested, unfortunately. But it's very, very close and it's really is a minor, I use the term discrepancy in extending that additional 2.1 feet closer to the front lot line. As I say, there's a lot of new landscaping, which was installed within the property along the perimeter of the of the the front yard. And so this proximity of the corner of the parking area to the front lot line is really quite hidden from you, from Kathleen Lane.
How many vehicles can the parking area accommodate?
I believe it's about three is what's typically parked there. It's only a one-car garage here, too, which is kind of small.
When was this constructed?
Pardon me?
When was this constructed?
In 2022, last year. Even as late as during the fall.
So didn't, so Mr. Salazar was aware that it had to be 25 feet from the road, correct?
He probably was, but I believe, however, you know, the contractor had not constructed it to that distance.
So I think here I don't know if Susan Maney is present to be heard on this matter, but are you aware of her comments about the scope of the construction and the work that has been going on?
Yes. And actually, I don't think it accurately portrays what was going on there. There's a lot of vegetation which was installed. You know, there's a lot of perimeter planting that was placed by Mr. Salazar. And so naturally, you know, to bring in a lot of plant materials, and you saw that picture that I showed of the along the street frontage along Kathleen Lane, just as an example. There obviously is a lot of work that is done, both to install plant materials. You know, there's excavation that's done in order to style a planting pit. I saw Ms. Maney's comment regarding the drainage along Kathleen Lane. I would say that the drainage area, which goes to that single catch basin on the north, I guess it's on the, lack of a better term, we call it the north side, Mr. Salazar's side, if you will, of Kathleen Lane, has a drainage area of nearly five acres. And you know, I'll say this drainage area here. Let me, let me reshare the screen.
Well, while you're doing that, could I, so the landscape work is really not an element having to do with this application from, I think, my understanding. What we hear about a parking area.
Correct.
Your estimation, has the reconstruction of the parking area had any adverse impact on Kathleen Lane or any neighbor in proximity to Mrs. Salazar?
Yeah, I don't believe it can or did. The reason is that this lot has a excuse me, has a new drainage system that was installed, which includes a, you know, a bi-retention area. And the bi-retention area, you know, promotes infiltration into the ground, so it reduces runoff into the street. I think one of the issues that Ms. Maney had identified, and I know she showed pictures of, you know, vehicles in the lot during construct, during, and Mr. Salazar's property during construction, and also showed, you know, ponding in the street. I think one of the issues that is occurring here is that Kathleen Lane, that lower portion of it, actually right along the front edge of Mr. Salazar's property, is essentially level. And as you probably know, on level properties, drainage is never very positive. And there's just that one single drain inlet which is located there. And I think that's one of the issues that perhaps is being, you know, I'll say is the onus is on the town to improve this situation. I think what Mr. Salazar did by planting a lot of vegetation, by constructing, by reducing the size of the parking area that was there previously, by installing a bi-retention area, has improved that drainage situation.
So.
There previously.
Okay, last point that that I want to just review. So I know that the building inspector went out and looked at the property I think more than two years ago and instructed the applicant to reconstruct the parking area so that it would be compliant. It's 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 hard to understand after the town has gone to the trouble of informing the applicant of what is required, that he would then not put the property in a position to be compliant with the setback requirements. Do you want to, and I know that the variance is not significant, but I think it's principle of the matter here in part in that the town is going to send our building inspector out to look at properties and to look at work, explain to the applicant what's required to be in compliance. And then if we were in a position where no one paid attention and everyone did what they wanted to, that, you know, the town would be in disarray. Could you explain for us the financial implications of asking you to now put the parking area in compliance? Could you help us understand the scale and scope of what would be involved? And cost?
I think what would be involved would be saw cutting the pavement area and, you know, removal of that pavement. Reinstallation of Belgium block curbing, so it would be consistent with the rest of the perimeter of that parking area. And then re-establishing a lawn. I'm not sure I could quantify what the financial aspect of it, but that would, that would be what would be involved. So it'd be saw cutting pavement, removal of it, resetting in concrete, which is what was done. The the Belgium block curbing, placing topsoil and re-establishing a lawn in that, you know, that 2.1 feet of presently paved area.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Could you put that person through? Okay. Who is it that would like to be heard? Is that Michelle?
Yes.
Mayrov?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Hi. I live at Ford Kathleen. Mr. Salazar has he has installed some very attractive trees on his property, so I commend him for that. But the problem is that when he installed them, he removed the drainage swell that had been collecting the rainwater runoff in the neighborhood before. And so now you have this massive puddle at the corner of Kathleen and Bedford. Before Mr. Salazar did his work on the property, that water would have drained into the swell. My understanding is that the town is aware of this. And so there was some kind of rain garden that was installed, but none of, none of this is working. And having a larger hardscape area on the property probably only compounds the problem. So I'm, I, I, my concern here is, is drainage. I don't have a problem with the way the property looks. And I don't personally have a problem with Mr. Salazar having a larger parking area. But all of this work, when taken together, seems to have created a problem with drainage in our neighborhood. And, you know, people walk their dogs. They, you know, my son likes to walk to A and S. And you can't walk on that corner for, you know, for a lot of the time because, you know, it it rains here a few times a week. So I don't know if this, this application is an opportunity to address some of that, but I just wanted to be heard.
Okay, we appreciate your comments. Is it Mr. Pilch? Is that, am I pronouncing your name correct?
Pilch.
Pilch. I ask if, so Ms. Mayrov, you may have not heard earlier. So the the landscaping work is not in the purview of this board. But we do have, obviously, the applicant and his architect engineer here. Is there an acceptance on your part that this is something that you could look into to see if you might do something that could mitigate what is occurring as it's impacting Kathleen Lane?
Sure, I think I could certainly speak with the town engineer. I think that would be the appropriate person to speak with or with his assistant, Terry Rowe, in order to see what we can do to perhaps improve that situation. You know, I think one of the issues here, and it occurred, it was, it was prior to this as well. I don't think it was the landscaping that was done within the property that's impacted it. But the catch basin is off the edge of the road. It's actually in a lawn area off the the edge of the road. And I think that's one of the reasons why there's been, you know, I'll say, there, there's maybe there's ponding that occurs out there, is that the catch basin is kind of, I'll call it an unusual location.
Okay.
There's something I could certainly work on with, you know, Terry Rowe and with Mr. Seoli.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments about the board? I move, we close, Tom, if you want, no, okay. I move, we close public hearing.
One second.
Hi.
Anthony Giordino.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Bye. Would you like to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I move that the Salazar application for a are we certain that it's it's 2.1 feet? Is that?
That was in accordance with the survey that was done by Rob Johnson's office.
Variance of 2.1 feet for a front yard variance for the existing reconstructed parking area on this property. The applicant has reduced the size and the intrusion into the setback.
Are you making a motion to approve or deny? I don't think I heard that.
Oh, to approve.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be sure.
No, no, thank you. Okay. The applicant has made the effort to reduce the size of the intrusion into this, into the setback. However, failed to the extent of the the variance that's being requested at this time. In spite of this, it's my recommendation that we approve the the variance. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood by virtue of the fact that the the size of the area is being reduced. The benefit cannot be sought through, well, the benefit can be sought through other means if the board so chose to insist that the applicant observe the 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 setback. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And the alleged difficulty, in this case, I view as being self-created. In spite of this, I think the the applicant, as he started by saying. In spite of this, I think the applicant, as he started by saying, you know, has made the effort to reduce the size of the parking area, limiting the intrusion into the setback. As the work has been completed, do you require an ASBIL survey, Tom?
We currently have.
We have one, okay. And for these reasons, we have heard from neighbors, but not as it relates to the parking area, but other matters having to do with landscaping and water on Kathleen Lane. The applicant has offered to contact the town to try to address that situation. For these reasons, I think we should approve. What happens if...
You don't have a valid motion, if there's no second.
So, do we ask someone who wants to make a new motion to decline?
If that's how the board wants to proceed, I think we would recommend that, you know, if you're going to decline, that you set forth the reasons, and we could prepare a written resolution that you could vote on at the next meeting. If that's going to be, if that's the preference of the board, that you call the board members, and if that's where you want to go, you give us the reasons for the denial, and we could prepare a written resolution, setting forth the reasons for the denial.
And you would, you would make the motion for us to prepare the resolution, which again is voted on at the next meeting, so no actual vote.
Okay. Are you inclined to decline the application? And decline, and decline? Okay, so I would move that the, we request counsel to create a resolution that the board can vote on at the next meeting. You should be aware of that. You know, preliminarily, the board will not be voting to approve the application.
And they can submit materials for the next meeting, if they have any updates or anything, you know, if they want to come back and revise something.
Okay.
Does the, do any of the board members have specific reasons they want to provide for why they are not in favor of granting the resolution?
Well, I'm particularly troubled by the fact that this is a fairly new installation, and the applicant was made aware of the the setback and chose to ignore it. And I think to remove two feet is not the...
I would like to say something. So, the reason is that sometimes, we don't know, I'm a plumber. So, I hire, I hire one guy, he stood me up, I pay a lot of money. And then I hire another guy, and it happens, and then Alan is helping me, right? So, he knows the rules, but I don't know this, the, I know that my trade, because it's plumbing, so I know calls of plumbing, but, so only what I'm asking is to help me to not make more of the pains, because everybody works for money, you know, I mean, I work hard, so what we have, I know you guys trying to make the rules, but if this doesn't affect to nobody, I guess, why, why can't I help each other? Alan say, and I already, already hear Mitch or my neighbor about the water, that I mean, we're going to try to work with Terry Rowe to see what's going on with the water, then maybe adding a cost to the problem, but I'm willing to help and see what we can do, something that is part of the water, and now it's getting on me. But why we cannot work together if we only, we need one more motion to do it, if it is not affecting everybody? I was here in the whole, whole meeting, and I'm the only one, I got denied. So, that's, that's my opinion. But you guys are the boss, you guys decide what to do.
George, you just want to respond, just as it relates to the process, just so Mr. Salazar understands.
Yes, Mr. Salazar, officially, there is no denial, first of all, tonight. It would be a motion for us as legal counsel to prepare a resolution, which would be voted on. It would be another voting process next month. You are more than welcome to, whether it's redesign or resubmit some material, or you have some other, you know, maybe drainage mitigation, whatever you think would help your case, you're more than welcome to submit that for the next meeting. The issue being that tonight, they, there was no second on motion to approve. So, again, it's not necessarily a denial at this moment tonight. But the process requires that we come back next month. So, you do have that time to, again, if you want to submit a letter, you want to submit drawings, whatever the case is, something that you might think helps your case.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Salazar, could I just add one other thing? I would recommend that when you return, regardless of what other documentation or argument you wish to make, that you come back to the board and explain the financial implications of making the change so that you are compliant. I'm not saying that that will sway anyone's opinion, but it certainly will sort of complete the picture so that the board can make an informed decision at that time. Okay?
I understand your point, I mean, Alan will help me with that. The only thing I wanted to say is the, I have two kids, seven and four. I'm waiting for another kid, my wife is pregnant. So, I don't have the money to be spending and spending. I got a screw-up two times for two contractors. So, it's my fault to not hire the right person, but I was trying just to see if we can make this resolve and, and get it done, you know what I mean? Because I work with you guys, you know?
Okay, we've heard you, you heard what I had to say and what councilors had to say. Eric, did you want to add something?
Sure, I think I would recommend that you vote to adjourn, leave the public hearing open, adjourn it to the next meeting, so you can accept further materials prior to the next meeting, either from the public or from the applicant. Our office will prepare a resolution as you've proposed. If new things come in and the board changes its mind, it can, that, that determination could be, can be changed at the next meeting, so.
Okay. So, do we need a motion then?
Motion to adjourn, and motion to also prepare the resolution.
Right, right. So, I move that we adjourn this meeting, hold it open for next month, and that we ask counsel to construct a resolution to be reviewed by the board on or before the next meeting, so that a vote can be taken at that meeting.
One second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Hi.
Anthony Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Nolan.
Hi, so we will see you next month.
I'll thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion for approved or adopt the meeting minutes for the December twenty-first meeting.
Second.
Chairman Kenneth Cooper.
Hi.
Anthony Giardina.
Hi.
Howard Dubs.
Hi.
Michael Nolan.
Hi. We're off.